Then call the February 9, 2021, meeting of Bristol, Virginia City Council to order. If you please join me in a moment of silent prayer. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Not quite as cold as it's been, but I still appreciate everyone coming out. A couple of things bring to your attention. Back in this December, we had the Commissioner of Revenue here talking about the tax bills, and people could, if they had some questions about that, could go through the appeals process. And I had a couple of people ask, and the next step in that is to go before the Board of Equalization, and they're working on setting the dates for that. But if you have went through that appeals process and still have questions about your real estate assessment, contact the Commissioner of Revenue's office and get on the list. As soon as they have those dates, they'll schedule a time so that you can go through that process. So I encourage anyone that still has questions about that or does concerns about the reassessment to contact them. Remind people, you may have seen also this Thursday and Friday that they're having a blood drive at Hard Rock, future site of the Hard Rock Casino at the mall, and I'd encourage people, if you can, to give blood. That's always good, especially in times of need, they could use your blood. And then, last thing, of course, to remind people, and we'll have an update here in a minute from Dr. Shelton, but, you know, as rates, positivity rates are going down a little, things are looking better, vaccines out there, but they're still, we're not where we need to be, and just, again, encourage people, when you can, to get vaccinated, but in the meantime, and even afterwards, to wear your mask and continue to social distance and wash your hands, because we want to keep our community safe and our businesses open and our children in schools. With that, does anybody have anything?
I will say one thing. So I know that February is Black History Month, and we hear a lot about the people, you know, you generally hear about in the, in schools in Black History Month, or Rosa Parks, Martin Luther King, Harriet Tubman. One person that I just wanted to recognize briefly tied to Bristol was Dr. Charles S. Johnson, who was born here in 1893, and he went on to serve as the first black person to serve as president of Fisk University in Nashville. And I know that that's maybe not something that a lot of people in Bristol are aware of, because it might not be taught in our schools. So I just wanted to recognize Black History Month and recognize the big contributions of an actual local person to higher education throughout the South.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. And I was wondering, if memory serves me right, Harold Carrier did a feature a few years ago about him, I believe. Mr. McGee's nodding his head, so that must be true. So thank you. Anybody else? All right, City Manager?
None.
All right. Matters to be presented by members of the public non-agenda items. No one signed up to speak, but if anyone has something, they're more than welcome to speak. All right. Here are no things. We'll move to Item D, adoption of the agenda.
I would move that the agenda be adopted with one alteration. I would move that Item Two, the public school update from Dr. Perigin, be postponed until the February 23 meeting, since he's out of town.
Okay. Have a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Clark, Darrell?
Carne?
Yes.
Mompower?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right. Item number one, Mount Rogers Health District update.
Council, we have Dr. Karen Shelton here tonight with Mount Rogers Health District.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having us this evening. Just wanted to give you an update on COVID. We've done this a few times before. I'm glad to say we have a little better news than we have at times before. We're thrilled to have the vaccine onboard. We'll go through some of the numbers. I can't remember if I have the clicker or someone else has. All right. Thanks very much. So just a little bit about, there we go, where we are, where we've been. So far in the state of Virginia, we've had 530,825 cases with unfortunately over 6,820 deaths across the state. In the Mount Rogers Health District, we've had almost 14,500 deaths, cases, 14,466 cases with unfortunately 375 deaths. In Bristol to date, we've had 1,197 cases with 73 hospitalizations and 27 deaths. As we look, though, throughout the Mount Rogers Health District, you can see we had a relatively slow start. We had a real spike in cases throughout the month of November and throughout December, very high cases. Thankfully, the month of January, things have come down considerably, and we're thrilled about this. We've seen the like course of events in the Mount Rogers Health District as well as in Bristol. And in Bristol, we had, we were roughly running around 10 cases, new cases per day throughout the month of November. We peaked on December 24 with an average of 17 cases per day over a seven-day average, coming down just slightly by the 1st of January to 15 cases per day. And thankfully, today, we stand at 1.7 cases per day as far as our seven-day rolling average. We've had a very few cases over the last week, really the last two weeks, we had a sharp decline in the last week of January, and we're very thankful for that. As we look again at cases per week throughout Bristol, as you know, we had a lot of cases throughout November, December, and January. Thankfully, they have continued to decrease. And in Washington County likewise, as I know a lot of our people are there, but you can see again just the numbers of cases, how they have decreased likewise over this time. We look at the regions of the state, and we see that the whole state as a whole has high sustainable transmission, but thankfully in what we call the far southwest, which would be our area into the west of us, as well as in the New River Valley and Roanoke-Alagany area, we're also seeing a decrease in our number of cases, very thankfully. We all, we look specifically at Bristol, and you can kind of see a little bit more again, our averages of cases and our rates having peaked and gone back down. But the second one talks about positivity, and I know we talk a lot about testing positivity. I think when you look at the number of cases in an area, you do have to look at the case incidence as well as the positivity, because if you only have one cases, but you have, you know, 80% positivity, you didn't do enough tests. So as we look to see our positivity coming down, we were ranging well over 20% for much of December and early January, but at our last count yesterday, we were at 7.9% positivity for the city of Bristol, which is great. That indicates that we're doing the tests, we are finding some positives. The goal is less than 5%, but honestly, to get under 10% for the first time since probably September, we're thrilled about that. So we are very glad that the positivity in testing has come down, as well as the number of cases. I don't have a slide to reflect, but we also look at our hospitalizations. We know that hospital capacity and healthcare capacity is very important for our region and our city. Valid publishes their numbers regularly. They give their 21-county report, and their height of cases was just on approximately January the 4th at 361 COVID patients in the facility, and they were maxed out with no time for, like, no beds for any elective surgeries. I'm pleased to report that they're just at 100 or just under 100 cases as of this week as far as hospitalized patients, and that's across the whole region that they serve. But we do know that they did resume elective surgeries last week, and so we feel that the combination of the declining cases, the decrease in positivity, and the decrease in hospitalizations, all three go together very well regionally to show us that we're having a decrease in cases, and we're very excited. We also want to look at vaccination. As you know, vaccination started in Virginia, at least at the local health department level, on December the 23rd was when we got our first doses of Moderna in the hospitals. They started the week before, approximately the 15th, when they got their first doses of Pfizer at our local hospitals. We have been in great partnership with our valid hospitals locally to get vaccines into the city of Bristol as well as our surrounding localities. We've also partnered with other hospitals throughout the Southwest. We're also working with community partners such as pharmacies and healthcare providers to also provide vaccine. When this started off very early, we were able to request the number of vaccines that we could give in a week. And as far as the Southwest region goes, working with Dr. Cantrell and Linnawisco and Cumberland Platteau, we were able to, the three health districts, Mount Rogers, were able to request numbers of vaccines that we could give, and we had a very aggressive vaccination campaign beginning on December 23, throughout the last week of December and well into January, and we were able to get a real jump on the vaccines. Unfortunately, the capabilities of the rest of the state increased, but the number of vaccines available did not increase. So when the 100,000 doses of vaccine per week remained stable throughout the month of December and throughout January, and unfortunately into February, because other, many other people were able to begin vaccination, we had a decrease in our allocation locally. They did then change, the week that everything got cut, the whole state had requested over 300,000 vaccines to be given, but there was only 100,000 in the allocation. So that is the week that they switched on January the 20th to a percent population-based allocation. And so they work with the health districts. Mount Rogers is considered 2%, Linnawisco 1%, Cumberland 1%. We get approximately 4,000 vaccines per week to go from Wits to Lee County, and this is to be distributed amongst all hospitals, health departments, and community partners. So we've had a real reduction in our vaccine capabilities over the last couple of weeks, but we have many community partners and pharmacies in our hospital systems lined up, and we do look forward to an increase in allocation going forward at some point and begin to rev up the vaccinations thus far. Thankfully, we have been able to give a great number of vaccines locally throughout this time. This is across the state, the vaccines that have been allocated. See a little bit here, as far as over a million doses distributed throughout the state. The darker colors do represent higher rates of vaccination, and you can see that in general the Southwest has the highest rates. When it comes specifically, let's see, I think I have another slide that'll illustrate, in Bristol, we've thus far, now, this is all doses administered to Bristol residents, whether they were administered through the hospital or local partners or through the health department. 2,677 doses have been administered in Bristol, with 590 people having received two doses or fully vaccinated, giving us a rate of 15,971 per 100,000, which is much higher than most of the rest of the state. When we look at percent of people vaccinated, Bristol has had 12.6% of its residents receiving at least one dose of vaccine. And so on a scale, the state of Virginia has a total of 10.7% of the population vaccinated. So we're very thrilled in Bristol. We're just above the state average for number of residents in Bristol that have been vaccinated. You can see again that the darker regions have had a more vaccine, better rate than others. In Bristol at this time, Valid Health is vaccinating. If you have a Valid Health physician, a specialty physician, or have been to urgent care, you can call their office to be put on the schedule. They tell me that they are also, will begin vaccinating other community partners who have not had a Valid doctor previously. They're waiting on their scheduling system to come online. We have previously partnered with Food City as well as Krogers and other community providers to provide additional vaccine, and when we have extra allocations, we will publish those and let people know where they can call. For right now, there is a website, the Mount Rogers Health District. You can go in and sign up to get on the waiting list for vaccines. You put in your demographics, but also, it also helps you to find your priority group. Currently, in Bristol and in Southwest Virginia, we are vaccinating with priority, those who are 65 and older, along with those who are essential workers, Phase 1A, which were healthcare workers, which have mostly been vaccinated, but also into Phase 1B, law enforcement, fire, police hazmat, corrections officers, homeless shelter workers. And also, our big category right now is our teachers, as well as our daycare staff. We've been able to do some government essential workers, along with some of the other populations that are in Phase 1B. We were very thrilled to get a jumpstart on our teachers. We got their first doses in, and all of our school staff regionally, the week of January the 11th. And this week, we're pleased to announce that they are receiving their second doses of vaccine in our school systems. This also includes daycare, public school, and private school, and this has been a great regional initiative. So we're very thrilled that our schools have had the opportunity for all of their staff to be vaccinated. So that is where we stand at this time. I don't know if anyone has additional questions for me. Going forward with this, we are just awaiting for more allocations to come through. The federal government has some partnerships, the CVS partnership. They had no, CVS is southwest of Blacksburg, but someone raised their attention to that. Thank you very much for the media. And they did put in a store in Abingdon that is giving doses. The important thing about the federal partnerships is those doses come on top of what the state has already allocated. So the more pharmacies or healthcare providers that we have that are in federal partnerships just adds to the number of vaccines in our community. I've been advocating for additional vaccines to come regionally to the Southwest. Hopefully, we'll make some progress there. They're working with several community partners regarding that. The things to be aware of is that even if you've had a vaccine, we recommend everyone to still, thank you for pushing this, Mayor Hartley, wear their masks, socially distance, stay home if you're sick, wash your hands a lot. There's still a lot of diseases we don't want to spread. We're very concerned about the variants that may be coming out, well, that have come to America through the UK, South Africa, as well as Brazil. They're picking up their percentage of the population within America, although it's still a very low percent right now. I think there have only been approximately seven cases of the UK variant thus far diagnosed in Virginia, none in the Southwest. So we keep ever mindful that knowing that if these variants happen, they could make our cases surge again, so we remain ever prepared. We are fully investigating all cases, doing full contact tracing, working very closely with our schools to provide the community safety net there, and working with the citizens and the residents as well to make sure to, we need to stop the spread of COVID in our community. So we look forward to the day when we can say we're done, but for now, we continue with our testing, our case investigations, and now thankfully adding vaccine to what we can provide for the community.
Any questions for Dr. Shelton?
I do have a couple of questions, and thank you for coming and giving this information. I will say first that thank you all for what you're doing with the vaccines, and I know Southwest Virginia has done pretty well with it as far as vaccines go, so we appreciate that. So kind of, I had a couple of questions that you already answered and a couple that maybe I want you to touch on a little bit more if you can. So specifically with like the variants like the B.117, which have been shown to be more transmissible. I know, I know we need to do all the things we've been doing for a year with the masks and social distancing and washing your hands. Is there anything that is, that people are recommending to prevent against it specifically since it's so much more transmissible, or is it really just a case of just hammering home the masks and the social distancing?
It's really just doing the things we're doing, and, you know, we had great concern about our social gatherings throughout the holidays. You know, Thanksgiving unfortunately did produce a lot of cases locally and regionally. I was a little surprised that Christmas and New Year's did not produce more cases than they did. I think maybe people got a little scared, or maybe they just gave it all their family over Thanksgiving anyway and got it over with. I'm not sure. But we were really thrilled, you know, to have less cases. I mean, everybody thinks, you know, like, what about the Super Bowl? Is it a super-spreader event? You know, anytime people get together, we're, we still have to be cautious, even if they've had a vaccine, we still have to be very careful to wear the mask and social distance and all those things. So we want people to live their lives. We want them to live it smartly and all the things that we pointed out already. As far as, that's still our best thing. I mean, people do need to get vaccinated. We do champion the vaccine as far as both the Pfizer and the Moderna. We're waiting additional vaccines to be approved, to come forth, to increase our armamentarium of vaccinations. But we, yeah, we still have to take precautions for now, but it's at least a sigh of relief as far as the case is going down at this time.
And you kind of just now touched a little bit on what my second question was. So with the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines, they've been tried, tested, verified, safe, you know, and then we've got the Johnson &amp; Johnson single shot coming, and I think AstraZeneca maybe later on. So how do you, how do you think that we should be communicating, either as local government or you all in the health department, to show people that not only the necessity of the vaccine, but that it's safe and that they can trust it? Because you, you know, just like the flu vaccine, there's all kinds of blatant misinformation and fake news and stuff out on, on social media, scaring people away from taking the vaccine. So how do you, how do you propose to assure people that they can take it safely?
Yes, that's a great point. Educating about that vaccine, we probably will want to ramp that up as well to get a little bit more information about the vaccine, both the Pfizer and the Moderna, and then as new ones come out. We, we do have a messaging campaign through the state regarding the vaccinations and their safety, and getting that out further, spreading that further, we'll definitely want to do more of that. Thank you, yes. So, but yes, the vaccines are found to be safe. Most people, when they get the vaccine, tolerate it very well. There's a lot of precautions against, for people who may have had severe allergic reactions to other, to other types of medications or vaccines previously. We do screen people very carefully when they come in for their vaccine and are prepared for such adverse events, but we do caution people regarding that. But most people tolerate the vaccine very well, a sore arm, maybe a headache, some fatigue. For the second dose, some people will tend to have a few more side effects, although not all. Some people will have more of the fevers, chills, or potentially GI symptoms, but these symptoms are generally very self-limited, last 12 to 24 hours, maybe 48 hours, and will not be anything like what people get when they truly get sick from COVID. Now, some people have a very mild COVID illness, or they may have no symptoms at all when they're diagnosed with COVID. But for people who truly get very sick, we know that these vaccines are 90-plus, 95% effective as far as reducing hospitalizations and death, and even transmission of disease. So we're very thrilled about the effectiveness of the vaccines coming out and what a positive impact on the community. You know, people have asked, why have we had such a decrease in our cases? I think it's really a combination of things. I think one is the very aggressive vaccination campaign that we've had. Number two is people doing the right thing, wearing their masks, socially distancing, maybe not as much time unfortunately together over the holidays as they would have liked, but everybody's making small sacrifices for each other and the community, and we appreciate the fact that people are trying to do a good job to limit the spread of disease. So it all goes together.
I got one more question, if you don't mind, and I'll, I promise I'll stop. So this one kind of ties back my first question, my second question. So with, with the different variants that are spreading into the United States and with people getting vaccinated, does the, does the vaccine decrease its effectiveness against the, with the, with the new variants, or? I've seen studies that say maybe that instead of being 95% effective, it's 75% effective or something, and I've seen some studies were stopped, like in South Africa with maybe the Johnson &amp; Johnson that's not approved yet here, because the effectiveness went down with, with the different variants.
I think they had the AstraZeneca there, but it is, yes, they're doing the studies to look and see. When we were briefed today, they did tell us that thus far, the variants, the, the current vaccine is, does work, that Moderna and the Pfizer do work well against the new variants coming out. They're continuing to study some of the variants, such as the South African one, which may have a little bit more of a variant on the spike protein part that they're looking at to see how effective it will be. Thus far, they have said that they do not feel that the new variants are more severe as far as the disease that they impart, but they do feel that they are much more transmissible, and therefore they have actually seen some increase in death rates as a result, not so much because it was necessarily severe, it's just that so many more people got it. So when more people get it, then unfortunately you will have further deaths from that. So they are continuing to keep apprised of the variants and how well the vaccine will work against them as it goes from country to country and community. We'll await to see what sort of changes, if any, that the vaccine would require over time. We know that if we look at flu vaccine and flu variants over the years, how those have gone since H1N1, each year, different flu strains are kind of favored, and each year they tweak the vaccine a little bit, and people are recommended to get a flu shot yearly to prevent against that. We still don't know what that's going to mean for this COVID vaccine, whether or not that would be something that would be possible. We're told that the mRNA vaccines are particularly adaptable to those kinds of changes very quickly as needed, so that's very encouraging. I think the best thing would be if we could just get it out of the community completely and be done with it, but we do know that we're dealing with a worldwide pandemic, and so we have to be sure to look around us, see what's going on, and be prepared for the next step. So we can celebrate some small victories, but we can't stop yet. We still have to keep doing all the things that we're doing to keep ourselves safe and our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any question? Dr. Shelton, first off, thank you for coming and giving us this update. It's very helpful to have this, and I don't really have a question, but I will say two things. You mentioned about the education part. I'm sure myself, other council members, city staff would be happy to help in any way to get the word out to our community.
Thank you.
So just let us know and contact City Manager and, you know, however we can help, because we, again, we want to, this is going to be with us for a lot longer than people would like, definitely, but, but for a while anyway, as these things, the vaccines and other things start to take hold. But in the meantime, we need to do what we can to keep our community first and foremost safe, but also, as I said, keep businesses open and our kids at school. The second thing is, and you answered my, I was going to ask the question, but I think you answered it already, is I want to thank you for the information that y'all put up on your website and on your Facebook, because I've been, over the past few weeks, as the vaccines rolled out, people would call, email, text, whatever, get in touch with me to ask me if I knew where, and I would either verbatim tell them what was on your website or Facebook, or point them in that direction. So that's, that's been a great source of information, and I encourage anyone to follow that, because you keep it up to date. And it is an ever-changing thing, as supplies come in and stuff, so I encourage people to use you as a resource for information, because I know when it first came out, especially with the different groups and places, there's a lot of concern about where do I go, am I in the right group? But I think that's kind of dying down a little bit. Now the problem seems to be more on the supply side, so.
Yes, thank you, yeah. We have the Mount Rogers Health District with the Virginia Department of Health. You can Google that, and it'll take you to the website. Also, we have the Facebook and the Twitter accounts that will post updates periodically as well, so thank you for that, yes.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate this opportunity this evening. Thank you.
All right, we tabled Item Number Two to the next meeting, so we'll move to Item Number Three, landfill discussion.
Good afternoon, Council. I left a document that I needed upstairs, but I'll pull it up here on my phone. Tonight, we're going to talk about two things in regards to the landfill. I know the public still has some great concern about the process that's going on out at the landfill and the odor that they are smelling, and we'll get to that here in just a moment. Based on comments at the last council meeting, what I want to go over tonight is, one, a history of the landfill, and this is in page 18 of your documents that I sent out on the agenda. I know last week, there was a comment about what is an enterprise fund, and an enterprise fund is basically a separate entity that is set up by a government organization that should operate as a private business. And that is the way the solid waste was set up in the late 90s. Prior to that, it was not an enterprise fund. It was basically a governmental unit that was part of the city, and not that the solid waste fund is now not part of the city, it's just supposed to operate differently, not necessarily as a service, but as a profit generator. The first landfill in the city is, it starts talking about that on page 19 of your, I'm sorry, on page 18 of the agenda documents, and that was Solid Waste Permit 221. That landfill was opened from 1977 to 1986. That landfill was opened from 1977 to 1986, and it has currently, it's currently closed. It has 15 extraction wells that deliver gas to a power plant that is located on the facility, and it's near, it's the closest of the landfills located on, on Shakesville Road. The next landfill opened in 1986, which is 498. That landfill is currently not accepting waste, it is inactive. We are currently called mining that landfill to use that landfill material as cover on the current landfill. So it operated from 1986 until about 1998, or I'm sorry, till 2002, when the current landfill was open. And it was opened in 1998 when it began accepting waste. And where's my notes? It has a 7.7 million cubic yards of total capacity for roughly three and a half cubic, million cubic yards that remain on that landfill. So there's approximately 27 years remaining on this landfill. These recommendations, these numbers that we're providing tonight is part of a study that was done in 2019 by SCS Engineering. So it gives a good history of what has happened at our landfills since 1977. Last year, we also had another contract with SCS to continue to analyze our landfill and determine where we need to move in the future as far as rates go. We did not discuss rates last budget cycle simply because we were in the midst of a pandemic. Based on the economic uncertainty of citizens and what may happen to citizens in the future, we chose to leave the current rate structure alone. At this point, we're not far enough in the budget season to make a recommendation on current landfill rates, but those recommendations will be coming very shortly. I've heard council talk on numerous occasions about different operations of how things should be at the landfill and how it should operate. And as we move through this, I want to show you what our numbers, or what the experts' numbers show of how our rates should be structured. So if you look at scenario A, this would be current operations with city-funded tipping fees, which is what we have done in the past. So fiscal year 2021, remember, this study was done in late 19, early 20, and completed in April of 20. They said that their rates for this, this year that we're currently in should have been $44.55, which is basically $11 more than where we are currently sitting. And then you can see that it increases over the next five years, all the way up to $55.19. So that's leaving things the same. That is transferring roughly $570,000 a year from the general fund over to the solid waste fund. Scenario B is current operations with the residents paying the tipping fee. So to make up that difference of 570,000 to zero, those rates this year should have been $46.20 and increase through fiscal year 2025 to $59.14. Scenario C is city-only waste. This is a idea that has been discussed on numerous occasions. And what that, and what that means is, the only waste that would be going into the landfill is waste that is generated within the city by the residents and businesses of the city of Bristol, Virginia. You can see here, if that was the case, in fiscal year 2021, the rate should have been set at $64.35 and increasing through fiscal year 2025 to $76.71. So that's roughly double the amount of where we sit right now to accept city-only waste. Scenario D means we only have a collections division. This also means that we would have either sold off or leased the landfill, and that the city would have had no part of the landfill operation. I can tell you, over the past two years, I've attempted on two separate occasions, through the RFP process, to either sell, lease, give away, destroy, do something with the landfill. And I've met with numerous business owners that would have an interest in the landfill for various reasons. Each one of those business owners have decided that the landfill is not a business opportunity they want to take. The most serious potential buyer worked with that buyer from, I'm going to say January of last year, I think, up until December of this past year, when I was notified that they would not be interested in that landfill. They spent a lot of time at the landfill, they had their engineer here at the landfill on numerous occasions, they had a couple of their executives here at this landfill on a number of occasions. I met with them on numerous occasions, had phone calls with them. They were highly interested in the landfill. However, based on certain conditions that they cannot control in regards to regulation, it was not feasible for them to move forward with our landfill. So to think that we can get rid of our landfill, I think, is a mistake. It's not going to happen, not going to happen anytime soon, and that's just the reality of it. So this is kind of what the highlights, I wanted to hit it in regards to the landfill discussion tonight, and at least give you an idea of where SCS says our rates should be moving forward based on certain scenarios that we have all discussed over the past four years of how we should move forward with the landfill. So are there any questions?
I got one. Mr. Reed, have we went out recently and gotten any RFQs from private haulers like Waste Management or Republic? If they were to just pick up city trash, what they would charge each person to pick that trash up within the city limits?
We have not, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One, I haven't had a consensus of council to move in that direction. Two, we have to remember the collection fees help fund the debt associated with the landfill. If it were not for the collection fees that we collect due to the, due to what we're charging the residents, the general fund would have to pick up the debt associated with that two and a half million dollars that we throw out every year to cover that debt service.
So would you tell me is the reason we had one RFQ is because the rest of the council doesn't want to do that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I don't think anybody, you, you mentioned it to me after the meeting last week without, you know, what didn't come up in open discussion. I have not gone out with it simply because financially, I don't think it's feasible. If council wants me to go out with that, I'll be more than happy to do that.
Well, I think it's, I think it's an arbitrary comment to say we can't go out based on what you just said. You always go out on RFQ, no matter what you think the final decision is, to see how the quotes actually come in. Businesses go out, so if you run this like a private business, you go out on a quote, assuming, they may all be bad quotes, but you still go out and quote. You quote three, you quote three individual companies, no matter what you think the answer is. Sometimes they all come back bad, and you got your answer. Sometimes you're surprised by those quotes. So I'm sitting here saying, we should go out and quote because the citizens deserve us to look at every option, right? And so that's, that's why I mentioned it, I thought about it late in the evening last time, because that is an option, right?
I don't think it's a financial option. I mean, and that's
That's your opinion.
Well, then, I need to figure out where we're going to come up with two and a half million dollars to cover the debt service payment. I get what you're saying. I wholeheartedly get that. I believe the citizens deserve every opportunity. The problem is, if you have XYZ company picking up the trash, that money that they are paying no longer comes to the city, to solids waste fund, it goes to XYZ company. And I can promise you, we are not going to get two and a half million dollars from a business picking up trash as a fee to come in and pick up trash in our city.
Okay, well, as a citizen, I'm asking you to go RFQ it, not as a council person, as a citizen, as a taxpayer.
And I think
And so it's a, it's a sunk cost. The debt is a sunk cost. And what I mean by that is, it's already over. We've already paid that. That debt is sunk. There's no decision we can make today that's going to change that.
Right.
The only thing we can do is what decisions we make to change the scenario going forward, right? So we're going to have to pay that two million dollars a year, no matter what we decide to do.
Right now, ratepayers are paying that two and a half million dollars a year.
I get that.
And the city is not paying that two and a half million dollars a year.
Whether you say the citizens, the taxpayers, it's all coming out of the same pot of money. We're sending the taxes into the city, going into the general fund, we're transferring it over to the landfill, it's all coming out of the taxpayer pockets, right?
This past year, we only transferred $106,000 over to the solid waste fund because we've been taking the right steps to move this landfill and the solid waste disposal fund forward. And everybody wants to beat up on the landfill. And there were decisions made, starting in 1998 or sooner, that none of us had any decision in. And I've said it a thousand times, we're here to solve the problem. If you, this is just my opinion. If we do not have the collection fees coming in to help cover the expenses of the landfill, it's going to come out of the general fund to cover that debt. And it's that simple. Ms. Rattlin, am I misstating anything?
You know, I understand what you're saying, Reed. All I'm saying is you're, you're making, you're making statements and opinions before you've had the, the chance to really look at all the options. And what I'm proposing is, we have to look at all the options. We can't say, yep, we got to pay the debt, and all of a sudden, the rates want to be here. Yep, you may be right, but you may be wrong, and it may be somewhere in between. So when you start to shut down the conversation because you don't want to look at all the options, that's where I've got a problem. I want us to look at all the options. The citizens have absorbed this cost, they've paid the high rates, they've paid low rates for a long time, which is a problem. You know, they never were adjusted. And then they paid high rates. And then we've allowed commercial haulers to come into this community and dump all this waste and pay below-market rates, which escalated the debt, which the citizens had to pick up, right? So they basically subsidized through, have you want to look at it, general fund taxes that got moved over outside, outside of the city limits, haulers coming in here from different counties and different cities bringing their trash in. Okay, that was wrong. Today, it's wrong, tomorrow, it's wrong. But that's what accumulated the debt in a big way. And so now, what are we going to do to prevent that same problem from occurring going forward? So we can't say we have the answer sitting here. We've got to look at all the options, whether we like the option we're looking at or not. We still have an obligation to look at it for the taxpayers.
I'm not, I'm not saying we don't look at all options. What I'm telling you is, it's very simple. Your revenues have to equal your expenses. If you don't have two and a half million dollars in revenue coming into the solid waste disposal fund, it's got to come from somewhere.
That's a true statement.
And
And so when are we going to look at the cost?
If you get rid of, if you get rid of the collection fees, which is the revenue, I've got to make up two and a half million dollars.
Nobody said we're just going to get rid of the collection fees.
Then why are we wasting people's time doing a RFP when we are not, if we may not, we know we financially cannot go out and get rid of two and a half million dollars in revenue?
Obviously, we can't discuss this in a proper way, so I'll just
I don't know why you think we can't discuss it. You've got an opinion, I've got an opinion.
Because you've got an overbearing answer, and I'm trying to say the citizens deserve us to look at all the options, not for you to come in here and say, we had a consultant show us this, we, we have to stock collection fees. Maybe we do, maybe we don't.
Can we take a recess? Can we take a recess? Let's take a recess.
All right. We'll go ahead and take a
It's unbelievable.
Five-minute recess.
Let's go upstairs. Let's go upstairs.
I hope everybody's calmed down, took their high blood pressure medicine and whatever else might have been needed. But anyway, I think there might have been a breakdown in communication there, because the way that I perceive that scenario and everything that Mr. Mumpire presented is, one, we do need to look at all of our options, what is truly available, because this landfill is a beast and it is kicking our butt, it's winning. And I think what he was trying to say, didn't just come out and say it, is that there could possibly be a possibility that we could get an outside company to come in and pick our trash up cheaper than what the city is literally paying, because when you factor in your manpower, your benefits, the expense on the trucks, and all of your equipment, it may be possible, not saying it is, but it may be possible that a third party out there could come in and provide all those services at a lower rate, even though our rates are $33 a month. That's not going to change unless we go up. There's no foreseeable future where it's going to come down. But if we can factor in and come up with the numbers that out of that $33, it's costing us $12 a month, I'm just throwing these, this is just dirty numbers, they don't mean anything, but if they, if it's costing us $12 a month to service this community, and we get a third party that says, hey, wait a minute, man, I can do that and guarantee it done, blah, 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 for $9 a month, why would we not look at that? That's what I'm thinking Mr. Mumpire was probably implying on getting these RFPs out there to see if another company can do it cheaper and save the ratepayers money on that end. I'm not saying we can do it, but it probably needs to be an option for us to keep talking about and looking at.
No, and your explanation is exactly how I understood that.
Okay.
And as I said before, your revenues have to equal your expenses.
Exactly.
So right now, when you write a check to BVU, part of that check, $33, goes to BVU for your electric bill, and then it's remitted back to the city, minus 5%. So we roughly get $31.50 from you per month for the waste that we pick up at your house. If XYZ Corporation, and that money goes to fund that solid waste disposal fund, it funds all the expenses associated with solid waste disposal fund. It, it funds the collections division, it funds the people who are out picking up the waste, it funds the landfill, it funds the debt associated with the landfill. So part of that $31 funds all that. If an outside company does that, and you're sending your check to XYZ company to pick up your waste, the city gets zero. There's where the breakdown is. Our checks, the ratepayers' checks are not going to this company. This company will be contracted through the city. The ratepayers will be sending their money with the BVU light bills, just like always before. BVU is going to Okay, now that, that's, and that's what I And then you're going to get an invoice by ABC Company for that monthly service, and the city is going to write that check and cover that expense on that service. Okay. That's the piece I did not understand.
Okay. That's the way I was taking it.
So, and I don't know if that's what he was meaning or not, but the way I was taking it was, XYZ Corporation was going to all of a sudden be taking care of the full collection, and they would be reaping the benefit of that.
No, I never understood it that way.
So then the question becomes, what is our true cost for running that collections division, and then how's that going to impact? You know, right now, I can tell you, the collections division runs about $950,000 a year budget, is roughly what that runs. You can do the quick, dirty math on that, divide that by 7,000, divide it by 12, I think it's right around $12 if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Is that everything factored in, the insurance policies on the trucks? That, that's everything to work that division?
No, I mean, that's just truly, that's the number that I can give you based on the budget book. I mean, that's close, but it's probably not 100% accurate when you want to start factoring in other things that aren't a specific line item under the collections division. You're looking at $11.31.
Wow, mine wouldn't work that far off, then.
And we've had that discussion before upstairs, and I think we've come close to that number.
But it is an option to get those RFPs and see what another company would charge. Because I can tell you right now, Cox is out in the county running for $20.
Right.
In the county, you know, and
I've got a question about that.
Let me just, I would go back before you put out an RFP and look, because at some time in 2014, 2015, very early on, when I got on council, we went through this process. I mean, it was done once before, not 10, 20 years ago. And the thought was to see, I think, kind of what you're saying, but also to see if our fees were, were in line, and, you know, to try to see. And it was come out lower, if memory serves me right, I don't have a copy of that with me, I may have one, but you should have one somewhere to look at. But it, this has been done before, because the other thing is, there's a lot of services that the city was providing, like leaf pickup and brush pickup, that weren't included, that would still have to be covered. And I know that it's not exactly an apples-to-apples thing, but I think before you, you would put out an RFP, I would go back and look at, see what had been done. And if it wasn't close that long ago, I don't know what's going to make you think it's, anything's changed in the last five years. I mean, it, that it would be closer.
Well, I can just tell you from personal experience, the waste management companies that do pick up trash that do pick up trash, you know, outside the city, typically, if it's not in your can, they're not picking it up. So, you know, they would have, if we want them to continue to pick up the things that we have picked up, which are sofas, mattresses, toilets, whatever people sit out, then we're going to have to factor that into that cost as well, if we want them to do it, or are we going to continue to do that piece? Plus, we have the leaf pickup that starts, you know, every October, runs through November. Grass pickup starts, you know, early spring, all the way through October. Not only grass, you've got the brush pickup that the city provides as well. So citizens do get, and I know citizens do not like paying thirty-three dollars a month, but I can tell you from personal experience, you're not having a waste management company do all those other services that we do provide to our citizens. One, I don't know if they're equipped to do it. They may be, but, you know, from my experience, the ones around here, I've seen them just pick up your ninety-five gallon tote, dumping into their truck and move on.
I understand that, but we really need to go into this discussion with this landfill with all eyes wide open and all hands on deck, and ask the stupid questions, and talk about it, and see what we end up with at the end of the day. Because we can get ourselves in a position to where we could piecemeal some of this stuff out. Let's say we have a company that does nothing but the cans, and then you have another company, maybe put in an RFP to pick up all the, the loose items. And then you have another company that, RFPs out there, that does nothing but brush. We've got a lot of companies, tree service companies out here, that have the equipment more than capable of going through this city, picking up any and all brush. So for those companies, who knows if one of them might be interested in taking all of our brush to the landfill? And it, so, at what dollar value? And we won't know this unless we do send out RFPs, and we won't know this unless we try crazy stuff to see what we can do to get our numbers down, operating costs down. We, we're not going to know this. I mean, everybody in the room has an opinion, but that don't make any of us right. We've got to do our homework. We've got to get this stuff answered.
I agree a hundred percent. And I want to say, it was spring of seventeen, I don't think I was in the city manager chair at, at that time. It seems like there was a discussion about contracting out, now this is completely different than what we're talking about, but contracting out cleaning services, or maybe the city had cleaning services that were contracted out at one point. And if I'm not mistaken, it was more expensive when we started, when the city was contracting things out than it was to do it in-house. Not saying that'd be the same in this situation, but, you know, it seemed like the city went through a period of time, probably between two thousand eight and two thousand seventeen, where they decided to contract a lot of things out, and they realized that wasn't as cheap as they thought it was going to be. You know, once again, I think we need to, there's just costs associated with doing this. Be more than happy to do it. It's just, you know, if that's, if that's what we want to do, we'll move, we'll move in that direction.
Well, let's let everybody soak that in. We're going to have this discussion every time we meet this landfill. Everybody can just take this topic here on RFPing for the city services, and we'll, we'll pick, pick up again on that next week and see how everybody's thinking, because as of now, you only have two that, that would even be in favor of that. But, and we don't need to be quick to make a decision. Are we going to send out an RFP? Make that decision tonight. Let's, let's think about it. Because if we can provide the same quality services through a third party at a reduced rate on the city's expense side, on the landfill's expense side of it, why would we not? And we need to ask that question. Why would we not? We weigh the pros and we weigh the cons, and we see where we're at at the end of this conversation. However many weeks, months, years down the road it is, we get to where we need to be on this landfill. We have got to defeat this thing, one way or another. So I hope the, I hope the conversation on RFPs don't die tonight. I would like to talk about this again after everybody can think about it and, and absorb And, and my question is, you know, on, on page thirteen of the report you handed out for this packet.
Is that the scenario D?
No, page fourteen, I mean thirteen, I'm sorry, page thirteen. It's talking about the tipping charges and haulers.
Go ahead and answer the question, let me see if I can...
All right, well, number four there, tipping fees, charges, haulers, do not reflect the actual cost of waste disposal. And it goes on to say, you know, that, you know, we're charging these haulers anywhere between sixteen to twenty-two dollars a ton, and the city is losing somewhere in the ballpark of twelve to twenty-four dollars a ton on this material that's accepted from this outside truckers coming in here, dumping their debris in our landfill. Page thirteen. So we need to talk about this. It, it's just too far out of tilt for me to, to, to just let this dog lie. My gut just don't like this. It ain't right, and we need to fix it. Somehow, some way.
So tipping fees charged to haulers do not reflect the actual cost of waste disposal. The calculated cost of disposal per ton of landfill material hovers in the vicinity of thirty-four to forty dollars per ton. Despite this, the unit tipping fees assessed at the solid waste fund to private and public outside haulers vary from sixteen to twenty-two dollars a ton. Therefore, many customers in the city is losing somewhere in the ballpark of twelve to twenty-four dollars per ton of material it accepts. In essence, the city taxpayers and collections program customers have been and continue to subsidize the disposal of waste by private businesses and localities located outside the city. And I think that's something that you all have brought up previously.
Multiple times, and I'm not going to quit talking about this.
And, you know, once again, you know, I think this goes back to the history of the I've gone back to two thousand, that's the electronic version of the minutes that we can get to. I haven't gone back beyond that yet. What I've found in my previous years of looking at this is, this was set up for outside entities to come in to the city of Bristol, and basically, the outside entities would be paying a premium to, to the city in order to have this enterprise fund. What wasn't taken into account, I don't believe, was the possibility of competition. I think when this landfill, the Rock Quarry landfill was, came about, I think everyone thought everybody probably within a hundred and eighty mile radius would be bringing their waste to this Rock Quarry landfill. And if that's the case, and we were the only landfill, we wouldn't be sitting here today having a discussion about the landfill, because we would have basically had a monopoly on the landfill and could have charged basically whatever rate we thought we needed to charge. However, over time, competition popped up. And in order to deal with the competition, you have to be competitive. Now, what we're getting ready to look at is apples and oranges, because at some point in the early two thousands, and really throughout till about two thousand and fourteen, the rates charged to residential customers did not change significantly. So over time, what was happening, the city was still subsidizing from the general fund, the solid waste disposal fund. At one point, it was close to a million dollars. That was probably in, seems like maybe in the previous budget, maybe the fiscal year seventeen budget before I was here as city attorney, it seems like it was funding nine hundred and ninety-some thousand was going over to the waste, to the solid waste division. But what would happen right now is if you closed the landfill to outside entities. While this comment says here, citizens are subsidizing this outside waste, what you are doing now, if you take out outside waste, the rate to the ratepayer now would have to increase dramatically. And you can see that under paragraph scenario C. So it depends on how you want to look at it, as who's the subsidizing who? Because if a ratepayer is going to pay sixty-four dollars as compared to thirty-three, it seems to me like by getting rid of the outside waste, the outside waste is subsidizing the rates, because it's keeping the rate at thirty-three and not sixty-four. That's, I think that's the difference.
Okay, I understand that, I understand that. But here's, here's the thing, let's go back to scenario C here. You and I have talked about this many times.
Right.
And nobody knows the real number, but we have talked about this, and I know that eighty dollars a month was mentioned our last council meeting. First time I'd ever heard the number eighty, because our conversations have always been in...
Forty to sixty.
Somewhere between...
Right.
Forty, I'm going to say forty-five to fifty-five.
Right.
It's going to be somewhere in there, forty-five to fifty-five dollars a month. It's going to be right there.
Well, and, and let me stop you real quick. The numbers that you're seeing in this study are based on actual numbers, based on funding things that we need to fund, and not taking a shortcut on the funding aspect of closure, liners, and things like that.
I understand that.
So when you see sixty-four, it's based on actuals that we know?
I understand that. They factored in, you know, capital that we're, that we're neglecting right now, and the city has been neglecting its capital for decades.
Decades.
Decades. So if they're coming up with sixty-four, I feel, I feel pretty confident that, and I'm not just disregarding their numbers, don't, don't get me wrong, but I feel like that if we work together as a community, we could easily pull ten dollars out of that monthly charge. I think it's there.
Out of this one?
Out of this scenario C. I think it's there. Ten dollars can be found. So that puts us down around fifty-five. And we're at thirty-four right now. And I'm proposing, and I'm, I, I, I want this council and this city to think about this, because this enterprise fund is supposed to be a standalone, non-subsidized, out-of-the-city treasurer. We can put our heads together and figure out a way for this to be a standalone, unsubsidized, with an offset on property taxes. The community needs to understand, if we choose to go this route, the city needs to understand, we're going to reduce your real estate tax, but we're going to raise your garbage pickup, but you're still paying the same dollar amount. Nothing has changed out of your pocket. We need this enterprise fund to stand on its own two feet. We're overcharging you on your real estate taxes. It's at one-seventeen, it should not be at one-seventeen, it should be somewhere around one-oh-eight, one-oh-nine. So there's no reason why, if we're subsidizing it anyway, there's no reason why we can't reduce one and increase the other. It's standalone, tell the haulers to hit the road, go to another landfill. And we have a landfill that is for us for generations and generations, and we're not spending the money that we need to be spending on a liner. In this same report right here, it's reported that we are spending four dollars a ton on a liner. Four dollars a ton, and we're letting people cross that scale for sixteen dollars, knowing that four dollars of that sixteen is going to a liner? Well, it's not, because the taxpayers is subsidizing the liner for the biggest part. We, we, we just need to keep this conversation going, but we need to, we need to ask stupid scenarios. Can we? Maybe? What if? Absolutely not. We need to keep talking about it, and the tax rate cut on the housing, the real estate, can offset the increase on the garbage removal, and everybody pay the same dollar amount, and the city not be subsidizing anything, and the haulers not be filling up our landfill.
Right now, the city general fund transferred a hundred and six thousand dollars roughly this past year from the general fund to the solid waste fund. Based on calculations, that would equal to one cent in real estate taxes. So if you're talking about getting rid of the one hundred and six thousand dollar transfer fee, that equates to one penny on your real estate taxes. Now, to increase that by a hundred and six thousand dollars to the ratepayer, that would equate to a dollar twenty-six per month, multiply that by twelve, that's an extra fifteen dollars and fourteen cents a year they would pay for their trash services, and that one penny on a house in Bristol, the typical house in Bristol, I think according to the census, is assessed at about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So saving yourself basically less than a dollar is, they would end up paying more by paying fifteen dollars more a year in trash services than they would by reducing the real estate tax a penny, on the average home.
Well, I'll just add, I mean, you brought that up, I'd have to look at the math. I know it doesn't add up. My experience tells me that, that when we look at what, you know, raising the dollar on the collection rate versus a penny on the tax rate, that they're not apples-to-apples, that it doesn't add up exactly. But more to the point is, the collection rate is paid by people that use the service. The tax rate is paid by people that own property. There's an overlap, but it's not perfect. I mean, you've got people that rent, and they pay to have the trash picked up, because they use the service. They don't pay the property tax, their landlord does. So, you know, how is that going to help them unless it may help their landlord? Whether they're going to give them then that breakback, pass it on down and reduce their rent? Maybe, maybe not. I mean, again, all these things, if you're the homeowner and you own your own home, yes, that, that, there's, there's an overlap, but there's, it's not a perfect overlap. So, you know, some of the people that you'd want to help, and probably some of the people that need to help the most, which are going to be elderly or other people like that, that may be rent, you know, I think the burden doing that is, is going to disproportionately fall on people in the community. I mean, that's another thing, when you say we need to look at all aspects, I mean, that's, that's a big one, because I know the last time we looked at the rate, a lot of people came in, they were talking about how, you know, they were elderly or, or in poverty, and so we went back and changed the ordinance to allow them to get the reduced rate, to base it on the poverty rate, not a fixed amount. So, you know, we understood that. We wanted to try to, to help those people out, but I think what you're saying, at least in listening to it, I mean, I'd have to see all the numbers and see how it bore out, but I think it could have a particularly adverse impact on certain parts of the community.
Well, after this, I promise you this, this landfill has an adverse effect on this whole city. I mean, listen, you know, but you're right, you're right. You know, everything you said is exactly true. So that's why it all needs to be put on the table and everything talked about. Now...
Can I ask a, ask a question real, about, about this scenario? So, correct me if I'm wrong, on, on scenario C, which is only accepting... on, on scenario C, which is only accepting city-owned trash, or city trash, these numbers, like the sixty-four, thirty-five, the sixty-eight, twenty-one, where it eventually gets to seventy-six, seventy-one, which I think is where my eighty-dollar number came from, I've seen this, this assumes that we also continue to transfer half a million dollars a year, correct? Because that's how I'm reading it.
Yes.
So if we, if we wanted to not do that half a million dollar transfer, these numbers are lower than what they would be, correct?
That's correct.
Do you know roughly?
Give me two seconds and I'll calculate it.
Say for, say for FY twenty-twenty-two, instead of sixty-eight, twenty-one, what we would be?
Six bucks.
Six dollars extra?
Six dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So about seventy-four would be the starting base for the next fiscal year if we did not do that half a million dollars, almost six hundred thousand dollar transfer.
Well, council, I mean, you know, we've, we've had these landfill discussions. You all had these reports. I mailed them out back on January twenty-sixth, I think. I've asked on several occasions to give me topics you want to discuss. Obviously, tonight's a perfect example of what happens when there's a lack of communication about what's needed so that I can properly answer a question. I think it's imperative that between now and the next council meeting, give me what you want to answer, so that we can come in here and have an intelligent discussion about the landfill. It does us no good to sit here, throw out numbers, me calculate here on my iPhone what that number may or may not be. That's why it's important when we meet, we discuss these things. Because we can sit up there, we can put it on the whiteboard, we can draw it out, we can think about it, we can throw things against the wall. But to have an intelligent conversation, it does me no good to come in here on every second and fourth Tuesday and have a broad landfill discussion. And what we have to do is people need to communicate, what do you need answered?
And that's exactly what I've been trying to say, and nobody's listening, is we not gonna know what questions to ask until we keep talking about the subject. And you are exactly right, the, the stupid comments, statements, questions, everything else, should be in another room out of the public eye to where we don't look like a bunch of fools sitting up here just arguing and fussing about maybes and what-ifs and things we don't even know is for real. Can it even happen?
Right.
But nobody wants to take any time out from a regular council meeting and meet and talk about this subject. So if we got to hash this out from now on going forward in public, like we are, and you, you're hating it, you just said this is not the way to do this, and you're exactly right.
I'll argue with anybody.
It should be done in a room to where we can ask all the questions that we need answers to, and you're sitting there tonight telling us to give you the questions, or the answers to questions, that we don't even have the questions to because we've not had the conversation. It's not, it's impossible.
Well
The more you talk, the more my head is spinning with answers and questions, the more he talks. Everybody talking is, everybody listening is thinking about questions they may want to ask. And if you don't talk, then the questions are not gonna come up.
But, and I
So, in the public, in the public eye, we should not be talking like this, but unfortunately, nobody wants to meet outside of the public, so we all just sit up here and look like this.
Well, gentlemen, there comes a point when having these types of discussions does this city no good in the eyes of the public.
This is not good.
This is not good.
This is not good.
And it doesn't look good. It doesn't look professional. And we've either, we gotta make a choice. And that choice we need to make tonight. One, part of the goals of the landfill. I don't think anyone has mentioned one goal that they want for that landfill. I mean, we've thrown out a bunch of different things, but if we don't have a broad goal to work towards, we don't, as a staff, we don't know where we want to go. And we can sit here and waste hours and hours of staff time providing information that doesn't get anyone towards the goal of where they want to go to. I think one of your goals is to quit accepting outside waste. I think.
Absolutely. Subsidizing them.
I, I think other council members' goals are how do we provide the services that we continue to provide in the most cost-efficient manner to the citizens of the city of Bristol, and run the landfill the way that it should be run as an enterprise fund, which is to run it so that it's either profitable, or it does not cost the city general fund money.
Well, here it is in a nutshell. One, the ratepayer is paying for the service. The taxpayer is subsidizing for the service, and the haulers are coming across the scales at a reduced rate that the, that the ratepayers and the taxpayers are subsidizing multimillion-dollar companies, if the truth be known. And we're subsidizing them.
And
All right.
Go ahead.
So my goal is to figure out how to get the ratepayer, the taxpayer, to quit subsidizing million-dollar companies across our scales at a reduced rate. That's my goals.
I think that's scenario C.
Okay.
Well, let me say one thing, which I think was a couple of good comments here. When business, this is a business, this enterprise zone, right, we, we've got to break even. So the goal is we have to break the financials even, right? The revenues minus all the expenses, our goal is that needs to be zero at the bottom line.
And I want everyone, I want council, and I want the public to know, we have done tremendous things. This council has done tremendous things over the past four years to make sure that that's happening. We've gone from subsidizing to roughly nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. We dropped it to about five fifty, five seventy. This past year, a hundred and six thousand. So we are making the right decisions to get it to operate to a net zero. I, I think the public needs to understand that.
Okay, that's right. Okay, that's good.
But here's where, here's what else the public
Can I finish?
Go ahead.
So you're right. So you've done tremendous, because we were at a million.
But it wasn't me. I mean, it's, it's a collective effort.
We, I said, we. We were a million dollars subsidizing now the general fund
Right.
In two thousand and sixteen. That's a fact. Go back and look at it. So that was a, a huge issue. Now it's not anywhere near that. City's done a tremendous job of it. So that's a good thing. The goal is to break even. Enterprise zone, we've got to break it even. Revenue minus expenses has to be net zero at the bottom. We're not here to make money. We're here to break it even. Now, when a business is faced with this, right, the first thing they do is they put together an actual product line P and L, an actual. You go back five years, and a product line P and L is different than a full roll-up, because you fully roll up your P and L, you'll hide stuff. You do a product line P and L, you break out the products. All of a sudden, what jumps off at the page are what? The products that are losing money and what's driving them. So if we're gonna really analyze this as a business, we need to do a product line P and L, looking at the first, the first product is the commercial haulers. That's a customer. That's a product and service we offer, right? That's one of the, one of the products we offer. We, we product, we go out and sell commercial haulers that come in. So that's one of your products. So you look at that from a revenue through a cost all the way down to the bottom. Gets a little tricky. Finance sometimes, they'll have to, they'll have to break a percent of some shared cost over to one product or not, but you do the best you can to estimate that, right? The next is the citizens, right? The citizens is a product, picking up our trash. That's a unique product collection, right? You could, you could even split that into two and call, call it two products. Citizen trash, citizen miscellaneous, the brush, the, you know, the couches. And then we have the businesses. We also, we also offer the same thing to the businesses. A little bit different product than the citizens, because they have bigger containers, much more volume. So I think if we, so the goal being break even, I think the first thing we have to do is break it down into an actual product line P and L over the last five years, and see what each one of those products look like. And you've got to say with and without the debt service, because it's a sunk cost. So you, you pull out the debt, you show it as, as a baseline, but then you pull it totally out and show what it would look like without the debt service. So it shows, are these products making money now, yes or no, even without the historical debt, you know, assigned to the, to the P and L? Because that's important. Maybe the city has done enough good work that some of these are now breaking even, whereas before they weren't. Right? So if we could do that as one of the, one of the goals to put together that P and L, I think then a lot of these questions, right, will start to surface about the revenue, some of the cost buckets, you know, some of the things driving the debt that we need to start asking to understand what's going on in this business model called the landfill. And the last thing is, business, businesses, when they do that, they do find that there's extraordinary things driving certain costs. Logistics industry does this a lot. They can't control fuel costs. So what they do? They come and they do fuel service charges, because without that, they make money. But within, within that, they can't make money, because they can't control the open market on fuel. So we could look at that, because there are some things in our cost structure that, that we would say we can't control necessarily. So we could think of it as a special service fee, pull that out as a scenario, and say, what, what if we did charge that as a special service fee? What if we asked for so much money, you know, per year, one time as a fee for the liners, as an example, I'm making this up, right? So that kind of analysis is what I'm looking for before we start having, you know, discussions to kind of absorb the actuals, right? The actuals that, that's riding on top of that revenue stream and cost stream that we've seen over the last five years to start seeing what questions I would even have to start asking. And then we can start really drilling down.
Well, my comment that I was gonna make is, yeah, it sounds good that we went from nine hundred thousand subsidizing the landfill with taxpayers' money. We went from nine thousand down to a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand. But what has changed in the last couple of years?
Well, the rates increased.
We've had rate increases, okay? We've had rate increases on the trash cans, but we've had no rate increases on the haulers.
Well, now, we've attempted that.
We've attempted it.
And when we did it, we lost customers.
We, we lost customers, but we survived that. We survived that, and we're still here today with a hundred thousand, a little over a hundred thousand dollars being subsidized. But the bottom line is, if these haulers are not willing to step up, they need to go away.
Well
And we need to figure out how to make it happen.
Well, I think it's very easy. If we want them to go away, I tell them their contract price will be thirty-five dollars a ton, and they won't be there. I mean, that's the easy way to do it. You know, but when you do that, there's a cost to that. I want to say that the haulers produce about three point six million in revenue to the, to the solid waste disposal fund every year. I may be off by a few hundred thousand, but I think it's in that three million range. And so, once again, this goes back to the simple math of your revenues have to equal your expenses. If I lose three million dollars in hauler revenue, I've got to make up three million dollars somewhere else.
Not necessarily. Because if you lose that three million dollars in haulers that's filling up our landfill at an astronomical rate, we're spending, what, two million dollars a year in liners?
No.
How much?
Less than, about eight hundred thousand a year is what we did for the, when we did it the last time, because it was totaled about one point four, one point six.
Yeah, it's about two million over three years. It's probably six or seven hundred thousand.
We actually were able
Seven hundred thousand per year. Okay, so you take, you take
Well, I think Ms. Bradlin's got
We actually were able to get the liner, Mr. McCullough, correct me if I'm wrong, the last liner, which was a huge success for the city of Bristol, at one point, less than one point five million dollars. And we now accrue, or account for, about one point eight every three years.
So it's about five or six hundred thousand.
And, and what's, what's huge about the liner is, and I know, Ms. Reeves, I'm gonna interject for just one moment. We cannot over, overstate the impact of the debt that the solid waste disposal fund carries. And how, that, that debt has to be paid, so it has to be factored in. So we're, unfortunately, we're not able to look at just the disposal operations independently of that debt, because it is, it has to be paid. So I just wanted to interject that, because always important when we talk about the landfill to talk about that debt. Thank you.
But back to my point, the cost of doing business is going to have a reduction, so that number has to be factored in with the lost revenues. There's a number. What is it? We won't know till we put pen to the paper. But there will be reduction in cost if the service, if those haulers all stopped tomorrow.
I have one comment. I'm gonna jump in. In closing, that was one of my goals, what Ms. Bradlin just mentioned, that I was gonna email, that we could maybe bring up and talk about next time is, because we've talked a lot about the collections, you know, the revenue from collections, the revenue from the haulers, and the day-to-day operations of collections, and operating the landfill. But I feel like the biggest elephant in the room that maybe we hadn't talked about a whole lot is the debt. The, what is it, thirty-four million in debt that's associated, that has to be paid, that maybe private companies like waste management or private landfills don't have. So, so it's possible that maybe next time we could talk a little bit about the debt, how we got there. I know we talked and said we had a big win this past time when we bought the liner, and we did not have to, we didn't finance any of it. We paid cash for it. So how do we put together a plan for, you know, yes, figuring out the collections and the landfill operations is one thing, and the haulers too, but how do we knock down that debt? You know, is it part of a, of a debt service, debt reserve plan that we put together, you know, to try to offset costs to, to the ratepayers? So that was one thing I was gonna talk about to, to bring up next time, the, basically the big issue of the debt.
Well, and I'm gonna go to this next time thing. We've got to communicate, what do you need to know so that I can give you an intelligent answer? I mean, I don't even, I think I know the goals of what everybody wants to do, but goals are one thing. I mean, how do we want to get there? Now, I can get you there, and obviously, there's, experts have gotten us there, but it doesn't seem like people want to listen to the experts. I mean, thi, this is not, it, it, it's a complicated issue on one hand. On the other hand, it's not that complicated. There's expenses on one side, revenue on the other. At the end of the day, they need to be zero. And, go ahead.
Just one quick question, since we're on the landfill discussion, because we've talked about all the finances of it, a quick question about the work that's going on over there. Basically, my understanding is it's, it's ongoing, it's in process. Is that correct? That, that things are
All right, I'll give everybody an update. I know there's people here more concerned about the odor than they are about what we're gonna fuss about, if a liner's gonna last one year, if it's gonna last ten years. I mean, I think the most important thing we have to worry about is what our citizens are facing on a nightly and daily basis with the odor of that landfill. So, as a quick update, you know, SCS, they started roughly two weeks ago now, at this time, and I'll just give you an update that came directly from Wallace. Wallace was out at the landfill today. He met with our engineers out there. The pipe's being welded into two hundred and forty-foot sections that will be pulled into place when that trenching's ready. There's five hundred feet of a twelve-inch pipe, six hundred feet of six-inch pipe, a thousand feet of four-inch pipe, and eight hundred and eighty feet of four-inch perforated piping. The twelve-inch line will go along the top of the quarry. It's being set in place today, which is a good thing. There is a sump that is currently being fabricated. That fabrication should have concluded today. If it didn't conclude today, it should have concluded potentially tomorrow. Hopefully, that is, has already been shipped out tonight. If it's been shipped out tonight, we should have that in the morning. If they still had some work to do on it, it will probably be Thursday morning before we get that sump. And that's the sump that's gonna go in the lower part of the landfill. It currently does not have a sump. There's gonna be some more materials arrive Thursday and Monday, and we're anticipating about four more weeks of work, and that's including some extra time in the event that we have inclement weather between now and completion. I can tell the Tennessee residents that I've been in close contact with the Bristol, Tennessee city council member, plus the Bristol, Tennessee city manager. Had a discussion today with Bill Sora about the landfill, about the odor, about what we're doing to attempt to correct those issues. And we also had a discussion about other businesses in our region that could be contributing to the source of the odors. We're not by any stretch laying blame to any of those businesses. I know TDEC, according to the city manager of Bristol, Tennessee, has been in Bristol, Tennessee, had looked at at least one business that could have been a potential source. That business was, after TDEC's review of it That business was, after TDEC's review of it, does not appear to be a potential source of the odor. So I do know TDEC has been involved, along with DEQ. We're still in work with DEQ, following our odor control management plan. We're developing that. We'll have that to them. I think it's due end of March. So there are things that we're doing to get this odor under control. I can tell you, just from my personal experience, when I've been out, it's not a pleasant odor. Do I believe that the landfill is the cause of the root cause of the odor? Yes. Is there a possibility that there may be an odor somewhere else that's coming from, that is irritating residents, especially on the Tennessee side? I can tell you personally, I've been out into the Maryland and Georgia Avenue area of Tennessee at night when people are complaining. One time I parked, didn't mean to, but I parked right near a manhole. When I got out of the car, there was an odor coming out of the manhole. I discussed that with the City Manager of Bristol, Tennessee today. Our sewer line does not go over to that way, so I'm not concerned that the leachate that we're pumping into the sewer system is the source of that odor. Our leachate goes into our sewer system, it comes down King Mill Pike. So I know everybody is involved trying to find a solution to this, to make sure that this goes away. I also want residents to understand that here very shortly, hopefully, hopefully the ground hall was wrong, and we'll see warmer weather sooner rather than later. Typically, when we get warmer weather, these smells dissipate because of the inversion in the air. It allows those hot gases to escape higher and dissipate more than what they can dissipate now. We may get this, well, we will get this corrective action taken over the next four weeks, and we may see a decrease in odor sometime shortly thereafter. And me being an attorney, I look at worst-case scenarios. That does not necessarily mean we've solved the problem, especially if the weather starts to turn warmer on us, because it's allowing those odors to go higher into the atmosphere and dissipate. When we will know there's a problem again is probably October or November of next year, when we start seeing that inversion in the air temperature. So it's a, I'm hoping we get this done, and the weather's cold enough, and I hate to say that because I cannot stand the cold weather, but I'm hoping that it stays cold enough to let us know if we've taken the corrective action necessary to get rid of those odors.
I'll say, I appreciate the work that Draper Aid and SCS are doing on trying to correct this smell as quick as we can, because I don't know what kind of noxious fumes are coming out. I've smelled it a couple of times, you know, when I went up there. And I would recommend to any member of council who's not been up there to smell it, to please go up there and smell it. It's bad. So I appreciate the work that they're doing, and I wish they could do it a whole lot faster. But, you know, they have to work on the timeline they have to work on, so that's, I understand that. But there are a lot of people who are being affected, and I think that their goal ties into my goal with the landfill overall, which is, you know, get it done as quickly as we can, controlling the smell, but also get the landfill closed as quickly as we can, so we don't have multi-generations dealing with whatever kind of odors are coming out of that landfill. But at least in the meantime, you know, for now, I appreciate what they're doing to correct the smell.
Well, I mean, it's not me. We've got a team up there at that landfill that cares deeply about that landfill. They're doing everything they can to make sure that we are in compliance with DEQ. We have the SCS team involved as well. So, you know, this isn't about me, it's not anything I've done, it's just that we've got good people who are trying to solve this problem on a daily basis to make sure that the residents don't suffer any more than they have to.
I agree. And the people that, the mayor and I and you were up there, and we met with, I believe, Draper Aid and SCS, they're good people, they're smart people, they have a plan. And in addition to them, all of our city employees that are working up there at the landfill and out doing collections also are people that do have a genuine concern about our citizens and providing them a high level of service and quality, quality care, you know, because they're all doing a good job, you know, as best as they can with the situation they've been dealt.
I would say, thank you for the update. I'm going to try to wrap this up, and I think what I've heard over about the last 30 minutes, sum up where, if people disagree, let me know, but where I think we're at, where I think we need to go, is we've talked about the need for goals, and that, I think that really should be our next, at the next council meeting, talk about goals, but not just come in here and talk about them, that we need to let you know by the end of the week, and then you can email it back out to us, a list of everybody's, and you can read over it, and if it's misinterpreted, or you, I have a question about your goal, I'll call you. We need to understand what everybody wants, and then come in here and see where there's a consensus on those goals, and then what the information is we need. In the case of the Councilman Mumpower was talking about the product line P&Ls, if that's the direction, we need that information. We need to let you, Ms. Bradlin, Ms. McCullough, and the rest of the staff, the consultants, whoever know, so that we can get that information. And looking at the budget workshops, I'm assuming that the one that's on a Saturday is going to be devoted to the solid waste disposal fund.
That's correct.
So we've got a lot of time, and we can go through those goals after you've had some time to get the information, and then we can, and get the information to us in time that we can digest it and come in, it's really take some time and go through those. We may not get all the way there, but I think if we not only go through the goals, but kind of prioritize them, it'd help make that, it'd help make those next few meetings progress a little better. I think we'll get to some of this problem. We're not going to solve all of this in a matter of a couple of meetings or a budget cycle or something. These are long-term problems, but as, you know, you mentioned with the work up there and both Council or Vice Mayor asked about, there's some short-term issues that we've got to definitely deal with in terms of the odor and stuff, but the financial issues, those are more longer-term issues, and I don't see that you're going to solve everything this budget cycle. I think, you know, you want to move in the right direction. I don't know that you're going to get there in one, two budget cycles. Hopefully, you can get there quicker, but some of these other immediate needs, we definitely need to keep those at our forefront as well. So that could be part of the discussion. But I think that would make, after watching this meeting, kind of listening, I think that would give everybody the information that we need to make the next meeting a little more productive, and definitely that all-day workshop. Because if we come into that all-day workshop and we ain't defined what we want to do, what our priorities are, the questions we need to have answered, and give you time to answer them, and give us time to absorb that information, and then have a thoughtful, intelligent discussion, we're wasting a Saturday. You know, I don't mind having these discussions, but, you know, if you don't have the information, you don't have time to think about it, and we're just sitting here talking, we're not getting anywhere. We need to make a plan to make some real progress. Again, I think we can. I don't think we're going to solve every issue all at once, but I think we can make some real progress towards this. And then what we don't solve this time, we can keep working at it and keep moving forward in the right direction. I think that's kind of where I'm at after listening to this, and if everybody's in agreement, then that, you know, we can do that.
Well, let me summarize what I've heard. The number-one issue I think that everyone in us in this room needs to be concerned about is making sure that the citizens have the odor complaints addressed and addressed timely, and we cannot do that quick enough. Two, we need, I need goals of council. Now, I might get five different sets of goals. Eventually, I'm going to have to get at least three of you to agree on what the top priorities of those goals are, because there is not enough time and staff resources to chase down every goal to come up with solutions. We have to have a direction of where this council wants to go, so that we can get you the information that the majority of council wants to go with. And I've said it for four years, communication. Everyone needs to communicate so that everyone can talk to each other and voice their opinion with each other and sway someone to their vision so that they can either gain a vote or take a vote away. So I need to know what the goals of council are, because we don't have the time, we're in the middle of budget season, to work on five different sets of goals from council members. Now, that sounds like a cop-out, but that's just, we are limited in our human resources.
And I would agree, and that's why if we can get that to you, have a chance to look at it, see if we have any questions, think about it, that should be, that should be the goal of our next council meeting. Walk out here with certain prioritized goals, and that should still give you all a good 10 days before the budget workshop to get any information. If there's something you see that, that this is going to be a goal, but it's going to take us two weeks to get the information, then we need to know that as well. And people are like, no, that's a low priority, then, you know, or we'll get to it later. But if it's like, yeah, that's our number-one priority, but it's going to take longer, then we can get back to you and let you know that. I think, you know, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
I think, you know, we can have those more in-depth discussions about the nuts and the bolts of this on that Saturday. I think the next meeting, we can kind of get you the consensus around the goals, if you think that would give you enough time, the goals and the information that's needed for that Saturday.
Well, we've got 14 days between now and the next council meeting. It seems to me like it's reasonable, as you suggested, that people give me their goals by Friday, sometime Friday. We can, I can circulate those back out to council, council can look at those, and then maybe on Tuesdays, when we meet every Tuesday morning and afternoon, we can all have those internal discussions about what are the priorities that we need to look at, and then that gives me time to determine what the length of time that we'll need to get those answers for you. Not discounting Mr. Mumpower's product profit and loss statement, but that would take significant resources to do that, and that's probably something that we'd have to have an outside consultant look into. We're in the middle of budget season, and analyzing that right now, I don't think is, with their current staff, I don't think we could get that done by March 6th or whatever date.
And that's the reason, I think if we get these goals to you, you can very quickly say, this is going to take outside resources or cost extra money, and so, you know, if it's not being able to be done by then, it physically won't happen. But if it is something that, we need to know that as well, I think, because there's some things we can move forward with quicker, more internally, but there's some things that maybe is very important, so we'll just have to wait, you know, it won't be here by the time we have that budget workshop. We may have to wait a month and come back and get the information if it's really that important. Or maybe it's something that it's, it's not, we don't feel is quite as important, so maybe, but it's going to take a long time to get the answer, we'll have to come back at a different time. But that's part of it, too. If you know the goals and the information needed, you can kind of help, help when we have those internal discussions, kind of see the timeline, because some of this information is fairly, some of it already exists, some of it's easy to come by. Some of it is going to take some time and cost some money, and we need to know that as well.
I've got a funny feeling that, one, this subject's either going to die pretty quick within the next couple of weeks to a month, or a couple of months, or two, it's going to be a never-ending conversation. And either way, who it is, what it is. To set a goal to give to Mr. Eads between now and the end of the week, next week, I think the goals are pretty simple. We need a fair, working plan that is fair to this city. The goal is simple. It needs to be fair, what the ratepayers are paying, what the taxpayers are subsidizing for allowing outside entities to come across those scales at a reduced rate. It needs to be fair. That's a goal. Another goal is to get that landfill to stand on its own feet without being subsidized. The goals are fairly simple. It's just how do we get there? I mean, we could feed, we could feed you goals forever, and you come and you present, well, this goal ain't going to work, check. Well, we might be able to pull this one off, check. Goals is not what we need to be talking about. We need to be talking about the meat and potatoes of this beast, and we don't need to be talking about it in public every time we meet. But, but this thing has to be dissected. It's a cancer. It's killing us.
Well, I would, I agree with a part of what you said about how, you know, we need to prioritize, but, you know, we have, we have four roadmaps in these recommendations from the consultants on how to do, how to make the landfill better. It depends on, I guess, which road you want to go down. So I guess maybe that's what, what the mayor's suggesting is, you know, how do we want to prioritize, you know, how we go about this? Because I think, I don't think I would be wrong in saying that all five of us have the ultimate goal of taking this burden off of people as much as we can and minimizing the negative impact on people. I think I can be that broad and say we're all five on that page. But I think it's, I think it's a question of, I think what they want to see is how, how do we want to prioritize getting there? You know, do you want to leave it open for 200 years? Do you want to close it down in five years? Do you want to leave everything as it is and, you know, give it another 30 years? You know, I guess, I guess that, am I correct, that's what you would like to see, is how do we want to prioritize getting to where we need to be?
Well, I mean, you got to remember, we started this in the spring of 18, when, right after we were declared the most physically distressed locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Commonwealth of Virginia gave us roughly $100,000 to have an in-depth study done on the landfill. So we did that. SCS presented that. That's in the packet. They presented that, and they began that presentation in January of 19, again in March of 19, and then the final report was given to us, I think, June of 19, which is what is before, not this specific page, but there are, in the packet, was that final report. I distinctly remember in March of 19, the conversation with SCS did not go well. People did not like the results of that study. And so we continued to listen. One of the big things that came out of that study and that we heard from council was, what are, how do we deal with the rates? Well, so then, in spring of 19, we put $30,000 in the budget in order to have a rate study done. That rate study was completed last spring. We didn't necessarily get to go over it because of COVID-19. It didn't, wasn't the appropriate time to have a discussion about raising rates when there was economic uncertainty in our community and our nation. So we didn't have that discussion then. From two years ago, these are the scenarios that everyone came up with that they wanted to have discussed. One, what happens if we keep the current operation as it is? Two, current operations with the city paying more so it covers the tipping fee. Gene, can you move that forward? C, city-only waste. I mean, that's been something you've championed for two years, maybe three now, Kevin, and something that we have to look at. And scenario D, what happens if we get rid of the landfill? I've tried for two years or longer to get rid of that landfill. Hey, guys, we're not getting rid of that landfill. It's not happening. You may think I'm giving up, you may think I don't care, I can just tell you, based on conversations I've had with people that own landfills across the nation, we are not getting rid of that landfill and having a collection-only division. So scenario D is out. You might as well not even consider scenario D. Scenario C, I think this council needs to determine, are you willing to charge anywhere $45 to $75 a month for city to residents for that waste? And then scenario B, current operation, residents paying tipping fee, are we willing to keep the current operation as it is? And in order, and that number would change a little bit simply because we've got that transfer down some, but are we willing to be in the $45 to $55 range over the next five years? Or are we going to be somewhere, and I'm just going to say closer to 60 over the long term, to be city-only? I mean, I think that's the roadmap. What's this council want to do?
Well, what I want us to do is the hard work in between the goals and get into a decision to where we don't take any assumptions, we really, and it's hard, but you've got to plow through it. You just have to. This is a very complex problem. So a business was to go through this, they... So a business was to go through this, they would go get potentially a recommendation like this, but they wouldn't jump right to the recommendations, they'd use it as a guide, and they'd come back and do their own analysis to see which one is lining up to any of these, right? And most of the time, none of them line up properly, because there's things the consultants don't know internally to the business that can be done to lower costs. So I want us to do the hard work in between. And if it takes us nine months, time, you know, it doesn't matter right now. We got to get to a solution. I don't want us to jump quickly to an answer without doing the due diligence. So that's what I'm after. I don't want us to close the book too quickly. I don't want us to say if three councilmen or two, or let's all just open our eyes up and go through the hard details. It'll lead you to the right answer. It'll lead you, but we haven't yet done that. We've kind of nibbled around the edge. Some in this room may think we have, but we haven't. So it's real due diligence that I'm talking about, that a business would do to really dig into this and make a financial decision. And yeah, we have to pay the debt. That's why you pull it out of the financials, because you say, I don't want to add to it going forward, right? I want to look at that roll-up without any additional debt, you know, in future years. But that's what we've got to do, and it's hard. It's hours. It's excruciating hours, but you have to do it to make sure you make the right decision. And it may come back to number B. After you do that, you say, we wasted all that time, but we didn't. You learned a whole lot through that exercise, but it may come back to a totally different option than you ever see on that page. I've seen that happen more than half the time, that a hard decision comes back to something that, on the surface, it was talked about, never was on the page to be talked about. So we got to be careful discounting things, because you learn something through that that, that you didn't know, and it guides you in a different way.
Yeah, here's, here's something else, too. I mean, you know, I'm a totally disregard professional, no, they can, they got their piece of paper, they put their food up their foots on the ground, blah, blah, blah. But here's like, SCS, you know, what was the scope of this voting? You know, just give us a general analysis of landfill operations, okay? Now, what would happen if we took SCS, the same company, and gave them this report back and said, now, the scope is, you show me this city having knocked $10 a month off of this rate? What would this report come back and look like? I promise you, with that scope of how can you knock $10 a month off this rate, you will get a whole ton of different. No. Because they're going to ask more questions. They're going to dig a little deeper. They're going to crawl. It's all in the questions asked and the path that you take to get to those, this is ours. I'm not discrediting them. I'm questioning their scope of what they can go for, just standard daily operations, no big bets, no squeezing. That, that's not what this lane, that, that's not what you're adding to the plan. We got to get this beast.
So guiding us back, I guess, to where the mayor wants us to be. So I'll commit, I'll go ahead and commit. I'll send to you and to the city manager any questions I might have, or any priorities I might have by Friday. And I hope everybody else can commit to that. And I think it's, I hate to pull a rerun of Vice Mayor Farnham, but I think we've had a good discussion tonight, and I'm hoping to hear the second quarter financial update before it becomes the third quarter.
There's a halftime in there in between.
Oh, thank God.
Well, I mean, I think in some ways, you got to start with the goals and then ask the questions. So that, that's where I, I still think that's the first thing, and then the questions. And not just have goals, but prioritize them, because sometimes goals can be at cross purposes. So you have to figure out, you know, again, which is the priority, and, and some may be a short-term goal, some may be longer-term, too. So we need to think through that, but I think, you know, as, as has been said, I think out of that will come the questions, some of which you can readily get answers for, some may take a lot longer. But at least that will help inform the all, the, the Saturday budget workshop, so we're, we're making good use of our time. That's, that's where I think we need to make good use of our time. And, you know, part of that is, is knowing what we want, asking good questions, getting good information, having time to digest that information, and then we can talk about it. But just coming in here and talking is not getting us, I don't think, as, as far along as we could. And I'll leave it at that, so.
All right. Well, I'll let Ms. Bradlin follow up with the second quarter financial update.
So with that, we'll move to item number four, the presentation of fiscal '21, fiscal year '21, second quarter financial update.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This is the finance update for the second quarter of fiscal year '21, data as of December 31st, 2020. This data is prepared on a cash basis, revenues the city has received, and expenditures the city has paid. And as always, the interim financial data is un-audited data. General fund summary with a budget of $54.1 million, revenues of $30.9 million, 57% of the budget, expenditures of $26.4 million, 48% of the budget, for a fund surplus of $4.4 million. That is a large number. Of this surplus, keep in mind, $1.9 million is prior year carryover monies. Approximately $500,000 of this is estate revenue received for prior year expenditures. Also taking into account, July debt payments were made this fiscal year, were not made this fiscal year, but in the previous fiscal year in June, which takes us down really to about $1.5 million, comparable with the prior year second quarter numbers. Solid Waste Disposal Fund summary with a budget of $5.8 million, revenues of $3.1 million, 53% of the budget, expenditures of $5.8 million, expenditure budget of $5.8 million as well. Actual expenditures $2.8 million, 49% of budget, for a fund balance of $250,000. Capital Projects Fund with a budget of $10 million, revenues through December 31st of $685,000, 6% of budget, expenditures of $1.1 million, 11% of budget, for a fund deficit of $507,000. This deficit is made up of a state reven, of state revenues receivable. Transit Fund with a budget of $477,000, revenues of $87,000, expenditures of $185,000 for a slight fund deficit of $98,000. And once again, this is due to the timing of federal and state receivables for that Here's the general fund revenue summary of the $30.9 million received by the general fund. $20.7 million is from local sources, $8.2 million is from state sources, $1.6 million is from federal sources, and $271,000 is from other financing sources, primarily related to the fall debt refinancing. This is what our general fund revenue looks like, what monies the general fund has received. The blue, our local revenue, is 67%. It is 65% of the general fund budget. The state revenue is shown in red at 27%. It is 28% of the budget. Federal revenue is in green at 5%. It is 6% of the budget. And other financing sources, that purple, is less than 1% of the budget. So the revenue composition in, is right in line with the budget coming out of the December 5th tax deadline. The general fund revenue report, if all revenues were received evenly throughout the year, the benchmark at December 31st would be 50%. General property taxes are at 60%, other local taxes 52%, permits and privilege fees at 29%. This budget variance is due primarily to building permits, inspection fees below budget at around 31% for that line item. Funds and forfeitures at 24% due to a shortfall in the court fines, primarily related to the traffic program. Revenue from money and properties at 51%, charges for services 49%. Miscellaneous revenue is at 74%. This trends upward most of the year due to a large revenue received early in the fiscal year. Recovered costs at 38% due primarily to lower fuel recovered costs so far for this year. State revenues at 55%, federal revenue at 47%, and other financing sources related to the bond refinance back in the fall is one, at 100%. Financial data graphs are shown here. This is actual revenue to actual revenue. Fiscal year '17, actual revenue is shown in orange, fiscal year '18 is shown in gray, fiscal year '19 is in the yellow, fiscal year '20 is in the red, and fiscal year '21 is shown in the green. Local sales and use tax are up from all periods. COVID-19, so far year-to-date, has not had the revenue impact on sales tax that we had projected. We will continue to watch that as we continue on in the fiscal year. Consumer utility taxes are holding steady. Cigarette taxes are about even with the prior year. Lodging taxes are down from all periods presented as are restaurant meal taxes. So clearly, the COVID-19 revenue impacts are seen here on the lodging and meal taxes. This is what our sales tax revenue with a budget of $3.3 million looks like as it is received by the city. The blue is the three-year average, and the orange is current year data. Sales tax runs two months behind, so December receipts were for the month of October. This is what our lodging tax with a budget of $1.34 million looks like as it is received by the city. This runs one month behind, so December collections are for the month of November, and this graph does show, does show the impact of COVID-19 year-to-date on the lodging tax. This is the city's meals tax with a budget of $4.2 million as it is received by the city. December collections are for the month of November. This graph also shows the effect COVID-19 has had on this revenue category. This is the target revenue report. The previous graphs, as I stated, shows actual to actual comparison between fiscal years. This report shows the fiscal year '21 budget to actual comparison. You can see the total positive variances here are 701,000. Local sales and use tax has a positive budget variance of $353,000. Consumer utility tax has a slight positive budget variance. Taxes on records and wills, a positive budget variance of $16,000. Cigarette taxes, a slight positive budget variance. You can see the lodging tax there is a negative budget variance of $54,000. Restaurant meal tax has a positive budget variance of $401,000. Electric consumption tax has a slight negative budget variance. Admission tax has a negative budget variance as well. Communications tax has a slight negative budget variance there. And what I'd like to say about this data, if you remember how the graphs that showed the revenue coming in, that we're entering the time of the year where historically, meals and lodging taxes have begun to dip. So I'm not sure if these positive budget variances will hold. Here's information that compares what estimates were used to develop the fiscal year '21 budget compared to actuals for fiscal year '21. Sales tax was reduced by 10%, and you can see the monthly actuals here as compared to the prior year for that month. Meals tax was reduced a half year by 50%, which Mr. Eads likes to remind me equals a full year at 25%. You can see here that in July, negative, negative, in August, negative in September, negative in October, a, a positive, I'm, I'm sorry, negative in October, a positive in November, which was reflected on the previous graph, but a substantial negative in December. If you average into the, if you account for all six months of the fiscal year, we're down about $378,000 in meals tax, 13% from the prior year. Lodging tax was reduced a half year by 50%, also equating to a full year of 25%. And you can see, again here, that in November, we rebounded, and, but then in December, a significant decrease there. Year-to-date, lodging taxes are down 275,000 from the prior year, about 31%. And we will continue to monitor these as we get further into the fiscal year. Our general fund expenditure summary for the year, once again, if expenditures were even throughout the fiscal year, the benchmark at December 31st would be 50%. Government administration is at 46%, judicial administration at 44.94%, public safety 43%, public works 41%, health, welfare, and social services at 49%. Education is at 69.75% due to the timing of state revenue. As we've discussed before, the school needs a little more money at the beginning of the fiscal year. It does even out as its non-SOQ state money begins to come in as well. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural is at 45%, Community Development is at 36%, Non-Departmentals at 53%. That is primarily because our insurance is paid all at once the beginning of the fiscal year. Debt is at 54%. That is based on the timing of the debt payments due. And transfers is at 50.97%. Total expenditures for the general fund are at 48% of budget. And I'd just like to point out that most department budgets for this fiscal year took significant reductions, so the departments are operating within their budgets. This is what the general fund expenditures looks like, how the city's money is spent. The data on the left is the actual expenditures, and the data on the right is budgeted expenditures. Actual general fund expenditures, public safety, 25.94%, education, 17%, health, welfare, and social services, 16%, debt, 10%, public works, 8.91%, government administration, 5.74%, parks, recreation, and cultural, 4.69%, transfers, 3.92%, judicial administration, 3.29%, community development, 1.71%, and non-departmental, 1.69%. This data shows that through the first half of the fiscal year, the city's budget structure is holding. Transition to solid waste, revenues of $3.1 million, 53.64% of budget, expenditures of $2.8 million, 49.33% of budget, for a balance of $250,000 at December 31st. Disposal revenue is at 55% of budget, collection revenue 51% of budget, non-operating revenue is at 80%, and prior debt savings of about $122,000 have been moved over to cover the debt payments, which is why that category is up. Disposal expenditures, 35%, collection expenditures, 34%. Debt expenditures are at 78%. And just a reminder that the debt expenditure category makes up 35% of the annual budget of the solid waste disposal fund. The quarterly update for Fall's Phases II and III at December 31st. Budgeted revenues totaled $743,402. Year-to-date revenues total $405,667, or 54.57%. The debt allocated to the Fall's is budgeted at $2.3 million. We've paid $1.3 million of that. The revenue sharing with Washington County, the budget of $350,000. What's been paid, $145,000. So the budgeted deficit for Phases II and III of the Fall's this year from the general fund is $1.9 million. And through December 31st, that actual is about $1 million. is about one million dollars. Here's the information on the city's upcoming debt schedule. There have been no changes to this since it was last presented to council in September at the end of the first quarter. I don't think I actually presented it till November. I have been asked by members of the Finance Committee to present this information quarterly so that decision-makers in the public see this information regularly. This is citywide general obligation bonded debt backed by the full faith and credit of the City of Bristol, and this does include the updated refinance from the fall of 2020. And these are a lot of columns up here, and we show it like this every time because we think it gives a clear picture. What you can see is, over the next several years, the city's debt escalates to seven-point-four million dollars through fiscal year twenty-seven. You can see the shortfall related to that increase. Then detailed out is the refinance savings and how this will be used in upcoming budget cycles. You see a positive two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand in fiscal year twenty-one net payment, and that was a result of the May twenty refinance, which is budgeted in fiscal year twenty-one debt service reserve, and the Fall 2020 bond refinance savings, which was split between the general fund and solid waste. So this gives us a net payment of which a portion of the one million dollars annually budgeted for reserves will have to be used at that point to pay the debt. And you can see the budget we're working on right now, fiscal year twenty-two, uses that one million dollars to meet our escalating debt payments. Then as the revenue sharing payment expires, those monies are going to be used toward the debt escalation. The next to the last column is the committed reserve funds, and then the funding needed. So what this plan shows is that the city's written debt service schedule gets the city into fiscal year twenty-six. Once again, as a reminder, in the current fiscal year we're in, we have one million dollars budgeted to the debt service reserve as well. If revenues hold and expenditures stay within budget, those monies will be available as well. This is the city's current debt service plan. Cash balance information. The TAN, Tax Anticipation Note, expired December thirty-first, 2018, and was not renewed. It was not in the fiscal year twenty appropriation ordinance. It is not in the fiscal year twenty-one appropriation ordinance. We consider that a success here at the City of Bristol. The operating cash balance at December thirty-first, 2020 was twenty-point-eight million. One year ago, at December thirty-first, 2019, the balance was seventeen-point-nine-eight million. Two years ago, the balance was fifteen-point-four million, and at December thirty-first, 2017, the cash balance was eight million dollars. Here are the CD balances, one-point-four million in the reserve, two million in the general fund debt reserve, and a small amount, twenty-one thousand, in the solid waste debt reserve. And the historic TAN information is presented here. You can see those draws range from one-point-seven in fiscal year, one-point-seven million in fiscal year seventeen, up to seven-point-six million in fiscal year fourteen. Here's a little more detail on the operating cash balance. Five-hundred-ninety-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars of that is earmarked for future liner purchases. Closure accrual, not enough but a start, of three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-ten. So when that is backed out, the cash balance reduces down to nineteen-point-nine million. Would like to remind council that we use some of the unassigned fund balance in excess of our policy to pay off the DSS building, and I think it's the intention of council to reserve a remainder of that as well. This graph shows the city's cash balance at month-end. The red line is the current year, the gray line is fiscal year twenty, the orange line is fiscal year nineteen, and the blue line is fiscal year eighteen. You can see the trend here of the cash flows of the city. Keep in mind, this is the balance at month-end. It's the reconciled balance at month-end. It does vary some during the month, but you can see the curve here. Also, you can see it was below five million dollars at July of 2017 for fiscal year 2018. And that concludes the presentation of the financial data as of December thirty-first, 2020. Thank you, council.
Someone will say, wow, if we could hand out awards, tonight needs to be a night. That right there is incredible. That's the story of a decade right there. Did everyone notice there's no funds needed to cover debt service out to the year 2025? We weren't even talking about that even being possible three or four years ago. That's the most incredible story and turnaround I've ever seen in my life, and I'm here to tell you, I promise you that. That is absolutely unbelievable. There's a bunch of people in this city needs to take a lot of credit for that. Yep, a lot of arguing, a lot of not agreeing, right? But that's what it takes to get to that, and that is crazy unbelievable. Zero monies needed till 2025. Citizens ought to come in this room and do a standing ovation. That's what that means right there. I mean, that popped off the page at me like there's no tomorrow. I was not expecting that. The other thing I'm not expecting is for the amount of money to be created, that cash balance to start turning. It needs to stay on a nice incline. We've got to be really careful turning that cash balance increase, right? Because we're not out of that debt service widget, right? That seven million dollars in 2026 is still a big number. Closure accrual, I think it needs to go up. We know we got a couple landfills that that's not enough money. We need to take an account for that now that we're starting to get our arms around the financial future of the city, right? Sales tax. We had a very unusual year, right, with COVID. You don't get an opportunity to analyze revenues coming into an operation very often when you have a very funny thing go on like COVID. We got an opportunity to try to understand a little bit more about what drives each of our revenue categories, right? So I don't think anybody would have said that sales tax would have had an increase like that while lodging and meals tax would have had a reduction, right? So why is that? Okay, I got my own comment, but I think we need to study that, right? Because maybe there's something there that tells us something, right? So that we can turn around the lodging and the meals in a different way, right? So we shield ourselves against the next downturn that happens, right? So September was odd on sales tax. Clearly, something happened in August, you know? What was that? Does that explain it all, or is there something else going on that we don't understand? But that's an unbelievable story. I mean, freaking unbelievable. I don't know what else to say, really. Crazy, isn't it? I mean, isn't that crazy what we just saw? Or am I the only one that is sitting there just shaking my head? Huh? If anybody has any doubt, this city is willing to take on the tough task of getting our arms around our financial issues. They should have no doubt now, right? So that tells us right there, we can solve the landfill the same way we solved that. It took a lot of discussion, a lot of head-bashing, a lot of data, but we can do the same thing with the landfill that you see right there. Crazy unbelievable.
Any more comments, questions? I do have one question. In the slide you showed about the Falls revenue sharing, did we receive any amount from Washington County due to the opening of the business there?
Let me go back to that, Mr. Hartley. We do not receive any money for that. The payment is reduced. And so we worked with Washington County to get the number that it was reduced by, and that payment would normally have been one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, and you can see what it was reduced there by. Keep in mind that there was a soft opening, I think, Mr. Eads, correct me if I'm wrong, in August. And then we have to pay that payment in December. So where sales tax runs a couple months behind, we didn't realize the full amount from August. We anticipate that the next payment, which is due June, will have a full six months of their collections to offset that amount. Very important that we leave that three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, though, in the budget because you can see as it expires, we make use of that towards the debt.
No, I understand. I was just curious with timing issue, like you're saying, the timing of when the sales tax gets reported, when they have to make the payment. If we had seen something in this, I know, you know, we will later in the year. Of course, nobody knows what that amount is. I was just curious if this reflected that.
It did. The normal payment would have been one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand.
You know, Royal King looks to be doing extremely well. I mean, that addition to the city was, I would have never thought that it would have that kind of revenue business up there. It's crowded and packed all the time. Great addition. My curiosity is, does the overall total go up, or is something else going on that keeps it kind of level? But it's really going to help that three-hundred-and-fifty more than we thought, I think, because they're really doing well with their sales. You can just tell.
Mr. Bradlin, can you go back to that? Shows the debt plan, the debt service plan, that slide. Now, if I'm not mistaken, that's a slide we've been showing for a couple of years now on how we're planning on paying that debt. Is that right? Maybe it didn't go out to 2027, but we have been showing this in our quarterly financial updates.
Yes, sir. The Finance Committee, members of the Finance Committee had asked that we report this quarterly. And, yes, sir. And the one that was presented at the September presentation took into account the latest, the Fall 2020 refinance, so it's not changed since that presentation.
Well, I think...
Could that answer your question?
Yeah, I just think it's important that everybody understands this is something we've worked on for a number of years now so that we show how that debt service is going to be paid over time.
I mean, I echo what Councilman Moonpower says. This is a good story. I think people need to realize it. I mean, some of these things, you wouldn't have thought that, or looking at the TAN, things like that, just the cash balance of the city just a few years ago. And even looking at the numbers from this fiscal year, you know, some of that's, some of it's up, some of it's down, but it's up more than what you had anticipated. So, you know, there's still a lot of uncertainty out there, but, you know, this is a really good report, I think, given everything that's going on. So appreciate all the work Ms. Bradlin, everybody in the city's doing, so.
Thank you, and it has been a citywide effort.
I would say, I would reiterate a couple of things. One, we're really fortunate here, I think, as a small community. People are supporting small business, right? And they need to continue to do that. There's other communities, if you travel like I do in other states, they're decimated. They've made decisions at a state level that have physically shut those businesses, and they've locked the door. So we're lucky. And so continue to, you know, continue to support the local businesses, be thankful that they didn't have to completely shut down, that we've got to continue to listen to businesses so they can be flexible enough to, you know, still have customers come and go even when you have COVID, because that could have been a lot more devastating to us than what it was. Because we got kind of lucky in a lot of arenas, and some other communities weren't that lucky.
Now, that's a message worth repeating, I mean, to help support our local small business. I mean, it's the heart of the community, it's our friends, it's our neighbors, it's where a lot of jobs are. So I know a lot of people had done that before. I think this brought it more to the forefront of just how important they are, and it's something that we really need to, as individuals in the community, continue to do. But you're right, we're very fortunate here, I think. Any other comments, any questions? All right, we will then move to, I'm number five, a budget calendar update.
Counsel, here's the final budget calendar as we've taken into consideration comments from council and timelines and items that we have to do internally. What you can see from the previous calendar, we have taken out the February twenty-fifth budget workshop. That was a revenue workshop, and that workshop really takes us maybe twenty to thirty minutes at most to typically work through. We feel like we can get that done at the regularly scheduled meeting on February the twenty-third, and then we will continue on with our normal workshop schedule of March second, March sixth, March ninth, and the rest of the schedule has not changed as well. We're looking for a May twenty-fifth second reading and adoption of the budget. However, if we have items that pop up, or if, you know, heaven forbid, COVID rears its ugly head again and things change, we do have an additional few weeks to be able to pass a budget and give us a little bit of buffer.
Do we have the times yet of the meetings, or are we still going to set those later? What's the...
The times are listed there at the bottom. All meetings will be at 6:00 PM with the exception of Saturday, and those meetings will be at 9:00 AM.
So nine on Saturday.
So if the revenue will be at our next regularly scheduled meeting...
That's correct, yes.
So what will, and I think we've already discussed or alluded to, but I assume that March the sixth is Solid Waste Disposal Fund?
That's right.
Given the all-day nature, or we'll have more time. So what will be...
March second will be large expenses and budget requests. If I'm wrong, please speak up, Ms. Bradlin, and I think we're dealing with salaries and benefits at that meeting as well.
That also include capital, the capital plan, or...
I think we're still working on that, but I think we'll be able to have that done by March second as well.
That's fine. Well, I mean, and there are still some dates through March.
Yes.
It's a good start. Any more comments, any more questions? Okay, we will move to item number six, approval of a declaration of restrictions for Texas Roadhouse. Staff report.
Counsel, I do have Mike Hamlin here from Interstate. What you have before you is a approval of declaration of restrictions for Texas Roadhouse. As it was announced probably maybe this time last year, Texas Roadhouse has been interested in coming to Bristol for a period of time. They did make a soft commitment about this time last year that they would come to Bristol, and then, of course, we had a pandemic hit and things slowed down for a period of time. Interstate continually worked that deal over the past year to make sure they did not forget about Bristol, and now they have an agreement that they will come to Bristol and open. So in exchange for that, there are certain restrictions that Texas Roadhouse has asked for due to the fact that the City of Bristol owns a portion of that property, and the IDA had to transfer to that property. We have to approve those restrictions. Basically, and Mike, if you can just maybe walk this through this, but the overview is that you will not have another steakhouse located within the Falls as the Falls currently exist, and that a steakhouse would mean a restaurant that compromises over twenty-five percent of their revenue from the sale of steaks. If it doesn't have over twenty-five percent of its revenue from steaks, it would be allowed to be there. And then also, there are exceptions for other types of steakhouse, what we would call white-tablecloth-type dining facilities that would be able to be there even though they are a steakhouse. A Ruth's Chris, for example, could locate at the Falls if they so chose. So we would ask council to approve those declarations of restrictions.
I guess first off, do I have a motion from council?
I move to approve the declaration of restrictions as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, Councilman Osborne II, Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, my... Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, my family is in the business of, of the cafe-restaurant business, so I will be abstaining from this vote due to what I feel may be a conflict of interest.
I just want to say thank you all for, for your commitment to the City of Bristol, Virginia. I know that a lot of people are looking forward to it, and I'm looking forward to gorging on those rolls. So thank you very much for, for your commitment to us.
I, I reiterate that. I appreciate your, your perseverance. I know this has been a long time coming, and, you know, a lot of people have seen what the IDA did yesterday for our action in the paper today, and a lot of excitement, people, you know, looking forward. And I think especially now, you know, when there's a lot of uncertainty, seeing something new like this coming is, is a good sign. So with that being said, Clark, Colorado?
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Abstain.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
Okay, item number seven, approval of lot 12 designation of signage. Staff report.
Counsel, the city currently owns two pylon signs associated with the Falls development, and this will allow Texas Roadhouse to occupy a portion of those signs. That, I think those drawings are in the packet there that shows where they would be located on each one of those pylon signs. So in order to give Texas Roadhouse the right to place a sign on our pylons, we need to give them that authority through that designation of signage.
Any question? Let's pause it.
Does the city does own those signs?
Yes, sir. The Blackwater took the sign that's the furthest north on 81, I believe. Is that, yeah. So the city owns the other signs.
There's a light bulb out on one of those.
We don't have the money. It's operating at a deficit.
I would move for approval of the designation as presented.
All right.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Any, any discussion?
I was under the impression that the developers owned the signs up there.
I think we had that discussion last Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken, and let me pull up my emails. Okay, yeah, so I did send an email out that Tuesday afternoon clarifying that we did own those signs.
Any, any more discussion? Clark, Colorado?
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
Abstain.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard? Hartley?
Yes.
All right, consent agenda. What is the pleasure, counsel?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Clark, please, Colorado.
Farnum?
Yes.
Mumpower?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Hartley?
Yes.
All right, no further business. We stand adjourned.